God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
A couple of items here before we begin. I'd like to extend our condolences to the family of Phyllis Kukowski, passed away yesterday, our city manager's mother-in-law, and to her husband Tom and the family. Sorry to hear that news. Also, remind everybody that August 14th is the primary, and it's a very important day, and everybody should exercise their rights to vote and to get out and vote. A lot of things on the ballot. And also, tonight, we have the Human Rights Commission here, and I'd like to ask them to come forward and to do their presentation. Introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Paylor, and this is John Burdick, and we are members of the Human Rights Commission. We're here on two short matters today. First, I suppose, first, we wanted to present an award, the 2018 John Latch Human Rights Award. So, we would like to, we have decided to award that to the Winona Community Warming Center this year, on behalf of their efforts and for outstanding contributions to the Winona community concerning human rights issues. As you know, they opened and from November through March helped keep our community members in more comfort. And so, we do have a plaque today for them. I'm not sure if anybody is here.
(laughter)
Everyone, please come up. So, on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, we would like to present this plaque to you today, and thank you for all of your work, efforts, and continued efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for all you're doing to help our community.
And we also have an award for the student essay contest on human rights, and the winner this year was Alyssa Nettie.
Yeah. Alyssa, you want to talk and read here?
During the Renaissance, humanism was a huge impact. By following beliefs, people felt that each and every one of them was equal, and they valued everyone and their beliefs. Everyone is human and deserves to be treated equally. For the most part, humanism stuck with us, but not in America. Did humanism even come to us, or did we start off as the way we were until Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. came to us? Martin Luther King Jr. was one of many to be proud of his beliefs. What does Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day mean to me? To me, Martin Luther King Jr. Day is a day to remind ourselves of the good he brought. It reminds me that I can be proud of who I am, Hispanic. About eighty years ago, just that one word would have been meant to define me. No one would have looked past that one word that was thought to define exactly who I was, or what I was, because America had espoused one belief of those of us with different ethnicity. We were thought to be horrible, sinful aliens, and not equal to them. Martin Luther was under that category, and he was one of the first to stand up for what he believed, and others were on board. People had been so buried in their lives that they forgot how to treat others. Martin Luther King Jr. Day reminds me that, as a country, we shouldn't shut people out, and instead, we should be role models. Whether we believe in God or not, we know that this land was made for all of us, and each of us was put here for a reason. We messed up, and Martin Luther King Jr. helped us realize that. But we still have to continue his work. We are all human beings, and we deserve to be treated as human beings. Why exactly had America been pushing away those with different skin color? Were we scared of them? Are we still scared of them? I don't know how the idea came to be that having darker skin was bad, but even though we have tremendously changed, we still have further to go. It is easy to have our own beliefs, but when we present them to others, they may push us down, and soon, we start questioning ourselves. Even if we believe that no one can change our minds, they may have good arguments, one of them being that many of the crimes made in America are made by people of darker skin color. Our first thought is to assume that those who have darker skin color are the problem. But did we ever think deeper? Why are things this way? One reason is the preschool to prison pipeline. This is a civil rights movement that explains that blacks as young as four years old are aware of racism, even if they don't know it. Some preschool teachers, grade school teachers, or even other schools, or students, are racist. In a lot of places, people with darker skin color are getting suspended much easier than those without. This makes us stereotype that blacks are bad. Being punished for something that they didn't have control over, like the color of their skin, does affect them. It causes them to get into more trouble and possibly get into prison. People might not notice all these racist things or jokes that people may say as much if they aren't affected personally by them, but those of us who are affected personally do notice them, and it can hurt us badly. I've been personally affected like this, when someone said something hurtful right to my face. When this person said this to me, I went home and I cried. I had been so confused why anyone would say something like that. Then I realized that they hadn't known what they said. They automatically said it because it was what they believed. I had a choice whether I wanted to grow and learn from that experience, or if I was going to let it drag me down. There are so many worse things that people say, and I can understand how those affected can get mad from it and make bad decisions. I don't believe that it is good to take it out on others, but I do believe that it can affect how others grow up. If they've spent their entire life believing that they don't deserve to be treated equally, then I can understand how they turn out as someone who could or does get in quite a bit of trouble. Martin Luther King Jr.'s civil rights movement has impacted America enough to change our view as a whole, but not completely. Still, not everyone agrees. It is up to us to be the ones to change the human rights, and it is up to the children of today to be the ones to continue his work.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to roll call.
Mr. Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve.
Not sure I can follow that, but just wanted to send along my appreciation for Lee and Artwork Winona, which is shown on HBC TV. If you haven't caught an episode, you should. It's coming along really nice. And just a reminder to the council, on August 13th, Project Fine is going to hold this roundtable, community discussion, so if anybody's interested, make sure that you contact Project Fine. It's at 2:00 PM in Conference Room B in the county office building. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Porzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the Required Public Hearing section, item 2.1 is the public hearing on the Winona High School and Junior High School local designation.
All right. Luke, you want to lead it on?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you today is the local designation site for the Winona Middle School and Winona Senior High School, which I will refer to as the Winona Schools. The property was built from 1915 to 1928, encompassing two buildings that currently are used as multifamily housing by Metro Plains. Schools were in operation until the turn of the millennium, at which time, they pursued national, they were sold to Metro Plains, and pursued designation on the National Register of Historic Places, which they received in 2004. That designation enabled tax credit opportunities to be leveraged, to be turned into multifamily housing and renovated. As part of that renovation, the developer of Metro Plains was required to maintain the two buildings, including the auditorium and gymnasium, which is attached to the senior high school. At this time, the Winona Heritage Preservation Commission moved the buildings onto its list of potential local designation sites that did not take off until this time here in 2018, when the Heritage Preservation Commission voted unanimously by approving Resolution Number 94 to bring forward the local designation of that site. That site is the same National Register site, which is encompassing those two buildings as mentioned before. Before you today, you are to consider whether or not there are findings and recommendations for historical significance, which is defined as "associated with the activities, processes, events, trends, or persons of importance to the community, state, or nation." The current National Register designation reads that it had "an influence upon the broad scope of history specifically related to education." In the attached local designation form, which is a hefty 25 pages of reading, you'll note that we do highlight the education impact as well as the arts impact, which is reflected in the review by the State Historic Preservation Office, which highlighted that it did have broad scope for education as well as for arts, and recommended that it was an ideal candidate for a local designation. Looking at the timeline as was brought before you, on May 23, 2018, the HPC directed staff to bring forward the local designation form. On June 7, 2018, the HPC considered and passed Resolution Number 92, which gave formal notice that the Heritage Preservation Commission was considering the local designation of the site. On June 25, 2018, the Planning Commission, as required by the city ordinance, did review and recommend approval. On July 12, Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office recommended that it was an ideal candidate for local preservation, and on July 25, the HPC recommended through Resolution Number 94 that it be considered for approval here today. Should the city council concur with that finding that it was historically significant, you will be required to vote five affirmative votes, and if you do so concur, there will be a motion to accept and adopt the attached local designation form as findings of historical significance and the attached resolution. Available for questions.
Questions for Luke. George?
If this is approved, what does this, what's the role of the city in this, then?
Should this be approved, this grants the city an opportunity for local dialogue surrounding any exterior changes to the property. So this, in particular, not avoiding the context here, there was discussion of demolition of a portion of the building, and that would require, then, that there be public hearings on behalf of the city through the Heritage Preservation Commission and the city council through the local designation process.
Other questions for Luke? Pam?
I have, I would like to know why we are talking about historic, adding this to the local historic register now as opposed to like 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, when the building, at least one of the buildings, was in much better shape.
The local Heritage Preservation Commission did not start adding properties to local designated sites, as local designated sites, until 2008, when they actually went forward with the historic districts in downtown. They have been working to do one or two buildings per year, or sites per year, with the cooperation of property owners, and making sure that they're hitting that goal. Sometimes, that goal was not always met, it has been a methodical process, but because of the recent discussion for potential demolition of a portion of this National Register site, the Heritage Preservation Commission felt that it was time to move forward with the local designation and make sure that those local conversations did in fact occur. The potential demolition does relate to a significant portion of damage to the building, particularly water accumulation in the building, as well as animal inhabitation and some mold growth as well. So there are concerns for the status of the building, which was attached in a staff report from a May 30 visit from city staff, which does provide a substantial cost for remediation and potential rehabilitation of the building.
So, just to be clear for those of us here and listening, the designation is for both buildings on either side of Washington Street, including the auditorium. Whether or not the auditorium is demolished, the second question is, I guess I thought both those buildings were already under historic preservation listing in terms of their remodeling and renovation work that's been done over the past 18 years.
This would encompass both buildings as dictated in its current National Register status, so we are essentially just ratifying, the proposal is just ratifying the National Register site, which does encompass both buildings, including the auditorium and gymnasium. The local designation is different from the National Register of Historic Places designation. The National Register of Historic Places designation does open up the opportunity for tax credits to be used on potential projects. The local designation allows the Heritage Preservation Commission, which is the branch of the certified local government of the city of Winona, to weigh in on exterior alterations and have some control in the public dialogue around the potential alterations to these buildings.
I have a question. If you could say, what, talking about, you know, I think councilperson Iden brought up a timeline issue. Going forward, this local designation issue doesn't, if it doesn't happen, if it doesn't occur tonight, I'm just kind of looking at some options here, can it occur at a later time? Or is this a specific program that's only tonight and not into the future?
This could be done at a later time, should the council so desire.
Thank you. George?
Just a question maybe for Lucy, as it's been printed, as Al and I both serve under Port Authority, and there's been some conversations on demolition of the building and different things with financial agreements. If this is voted favorably tonight, how does that change, or how does that affect those
So, Mayor and Council, the local designation is about where the decisions are made, so whether changes are made to that building or not, being that it's on the National Register, would require a review, as was the case when there was federal money in it. If the plan went forward and the building was designated locally, there would be a series of public hearings at the Heritage Preservation Commission level and at the city council level. If it isn't designated locally, there would still be a process in place if demolition were to occur, and it would be at the federal level.
Okay. Other comments? If not, we'll open this up to a public hearing, and ask if there's anybody in the audience There's a sign-in sheet at the, okay, at the podium.
Hello, I'm Kendall Larson at 652 East Forest Street. I'm on the Heritage Preservation Commission as chair, and I just wanted to share some comments with you. The construction of the Winona High School and its attached auditorium and gymnasium, and the Winona Junior High School reflects the aspirations of the Winona Board of Education to provide modern school facilities that applied progressive education theory. Built between 1915 and 1928, the buildings were designed to complement each other and to showcase some of the prominent educational trends of the time, which included introduction of modern, or movement to create beautiful schools, introduction of the junior high school concept, and the development of more practical, well-rounded democratic education. In addition, the schools provided the community with cultural experiences through the community concert series, which we heard about at our local, or at our HBC public hearing. This series brought professional musicians to small towns across the United States. The Winona High School, Junior High School, and the auditorium were determined as eligible in the National Register of Historic Places under criteria A for local significance in the History of Education of Winona, Minnesota. The Winona High School, Junior High School, and auditorium are also eligible for a local designation for local significance of the history of education in Winona, Minnesota. And as you heard, the state preservation, as Luke mentioned, there was a letter from Michael Coop, and he repeated that, is that they support the local designation, they think it's an excellent candidate. I wanted to share also that, as you heard on our meeting at July 25, 2018, the Heritage Preservation Commission of Winona unanimously recommended the approval of the local historic designation of the site, and we ask for your support on that local designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendall. Anybody else here that wishes to speak?
Hello, I'm Carl, C-A-R-L, Sandquist, S-A-N-D-Q-U-I-S-T, at 1420 East Burn Sally Road. I hope you can read that, but anyway. I'm a new kid at the block. I've only been in Winona for four years, and when I came here, I was shocked and saddened by what I saw in Winona. There were these beautiful buildings here, but there were all these parking lots in between, without any cars on them. I thought, what is this all about? It looked like a war zone. I couldn't imagine this. And as I heard, people told me about buildings that had come down, like the Opera House, like the Post Office, and what happened to those buildings, they were gone forever. Coming from a place where restoration is very important, and I realize that not everybody can preserve, it's an expensive process. But as a former liturgical consultant and architectural space planner, had the opportunity to visit the auditorium and the facilities earlier this year, and I was impressed with what I saw in this building. It's a beautiful building, solidly constructed. Yes, it has water damage, it has mold damage, it has all these things, can be cleaned up. It's a wonderful, wonderful building, and it's very much worthy of your efforts to preserve this building. If you want to take down a building, take down the U.S. Post Office. It's one of the ugliest buildings we have in Winona. Parking is impossible outside of there, and it would be very good if we gave rid of that, move it over to where the former Kmart building was, it'd be plenty of room over there, and that's the way the city is growing, and I think it'd be a wonderful addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening, city council and mayor. My name is Andrew Bagneski. Sorry for my handwriting. On the subject of the auditorium, I think you guys should keep it and make it a music venue for big artists like such artists as my T-shirt. They're wanting to come to our city. From the history of Winona, if you look it up on Google, it's wonderful, you know, this city has a lot to offer, you know? What we're doing right now already with the Winona Arts, and definitely bring more artists, more comedians, more journalists, more people like Nancy Grace. It's a wonderful city to hang out in, I think. Comparing it to La Crosse, Oak Flare, Rochester, Mankato, I think we should keep this building and bring artists in to help with our city. And as the parking lots, I think we should build a parking ramp, charge money like every other city, bring revenue to the city, help the police department, help everyone out. That's my issue. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is David Wors. I live at 1470 48th Avenue, We Valley. I've been raised, I was raised in this town, I've lived here all my life, never left, because it's a beautiful town to live in. We've been doing some beautiful things these last 10 years, bringing things, what's your project with the Riverball, and everything else. But the funny thing is here, in this town, we have a tendency of destroying our past. We destroyed the historic Chicago Northwestern people for a road. We tore down the old water tower, which people used as a beacon, coming down the river, that know that they're coming to Winona. We tore down the old Salt Lake Factory building, which is a historic building, but just because it's outside the venue, doesn't mean you need to tear it down, because the two previous owners do do their job in maintaining it. That's not, that's not right, because if we don't maintain our house, you're right on our butts. If our yard's not taken care of, the city's right there after us. Then, you have the one building that was gutted by fire. No roof, no walls, nothing. You fought with him tooth and nail, but at the same time, you worked with him, and now it's become a beautiful building that's saved historically. There's no reason why we can't save the auditorium. When you think about it, how many towns, how many towns of 28,000 people have a thousand-seat auditorium, and they're downtown? And besides, you got all these new apartments coming in downtown. If you have events down there, instead of driving to Winona State or to St. Mary's, they're all within walking distance, so nobody's using their cars, so there's no more excess smog, or carbon dioxide, ugh, in the atmosphere and so forth. But I can remember, when I went to school there, Tyler and your home, that auditorium was packed to the limit. There was no seating, there was all standing room only in that building for our concerts. From the past concerts to the current concerts, it's a building that needs to be saved, because I'm tired of us destroying our past, because what kind of legacy are we leaving for the next generation down the road, when they look back and say, why did they do that? That don't make any sense. So I think it's a good thing, I think we need to preserve our past. Yes, it's got some damage because of poor maintenance by the other, by the ownership of the property, but they also asked for a minimal amount of money to help with the water damage, to help with the pipes. Not much to ask for, they consider the building's worth millions. We did the same thing by protecting our schools, there's no reason why we can't protect this part of the school. I thank you very much for your time.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak?
John Berg is my name. I live at 1638 Gilmore Avenue. I taught American history for four decades. I love old buildings, especially historic ones. I know that Winona has lost too many of them, and I'm very grateful for the work the Historic Preservation Committee does in saving them. But I think this is the wrong battle to fight, because I think it's already been lost. I hope everyone read Patrick Merrick's editorial in The Post about a week ago, in which he, I think, hit every right nail on the head in building the case for not saving this building. And I realize it'd be a loss, and it's a shame in a way, but I think it's too late. I wish we had looked at this some time ago. I called my councilperson, Mr. Thurly, about two years ago about this, asking, can't we do something to this building to save it and make it useful again? And the information he had was pretty much that it's probably already too late. That was two years ago. I would imagine the deterioration has gotten worse. So, I don't think it's worth saving. So I don't think it's worth saving. I think it's too far gone from what the information I'm hearing from city officials and what's appeared in the local media, if that information is correct. We can't go in to see it, because apparently nobody's allowed to see it, of the toxic material in there. Now, having said that, if the decision goes the other way, you grant the historic designation, and the building is restored, and it's well done, and we end up with a beautiful facility, I will certainly be one enjoying it. No matter how the decision goes, I hope the city in the near future will look long and hard at the possibility of enacting a statute that prevents any property owner from getting away what these owners got away with in letting that building deteriorate the way it has. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tabitha Fisher, and my address is 166 West Broadway, apartment 116. And I'm just speaking for the residents that live there, as I live there. And I know it is a beautiful building, I go there and there almost every day. However, everyone's talking about having these big venues, you know, big bands and stuff. We have to think about the tenants that do live there. That building is attached to apartment buildings, and that is really going to cause, you know, a very unpleasant living, you know, for the tenants that do live there. That's one of the concerns that some of my tenants come to me about. And of course, it would be wonderful to be had saved, but having bands and stuff like that, that's gonna, you know, bands don't get done at 6:00 in the evening, they're going to be running late. These are concerns that my tenants have, and I have as me living there as well. And that's all I have to say on that.
All right, well, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Connie Dretzky, and I live at 255 Harriet in Winona. And I wanted to just read a couple of quotes from things that I felt helped me decide that this was worth the effort. And one of the quotes comes from an article in the paper in 1974, and it talks about the Save Winona group that was working to save the latch block. And the HVC has opposed demolition. And really, what it does, and this is the quote, it says, "By imposing demolition while any chance remains, that restoration is the better answer." They just want more time. And I feel like that's what we're looking for, is an opportunity, just to make sure that we're making the right decision and that we're not saying we need parking. The other one is one of my favorite articles of all time, written by a young reporter who worked in, worked for the paper back when they were tearing down the buildings next to the Merchants Bank Building. And she said, "Winona doesn't have a parking problem. Winona has a walking problem." And I feel like that's really true. I work downtown on Third Street, Third and Lafayette, and I drive occasionally, and I never have a problem parking. So I don't have a parking problem. Now, I might have to move my car some days, but most of the time when I drive, I can park in a 12-hour spot and be there all day and not have any concerns about parking. I think the other one that I, the other article that I found interesting was one back from 1898. And that's when there was a group of people that were thinking that we needed to tear down what remained of Sugarloaf. They didn't think it was force keeping, and they decided that maybe they should fight for that. And it's become a landmark for this city in almost every photograph, up and down the river, up and down the highway. And I feel like we just need to make sure of this decision before we tear it down, because we won't get it back. So that's what I'm listening to.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Wish to speak, but I'm going to speak. This was supposed to be a meeting about having the two school buildings applied as designated as historic buildings, but it's turning into a referendum on the auditorium, so I figure we better talk about that. It seems like every time I come before the City Council, I'm tilting at windmills, and I'm going to keep doing it until I finally knock one down. I hear the proponents of tearing this building down all talk about the future. You have to look to the future, they're thinking of the future. Their future is, where will I park my car tomorrow? It seems like all the discussions for the future revolve around parking. Future is not two or five years from now. The people who made Winona weren't looking at five years from now, when they put up the courthouse, the band shell, the library, Saint Stan's, all the other churches, and this building we're talking about. They were looking 100 years there, 200, beyond that. 50 years from now, will a parking lot be considered such a great idea for putting it in that lot? Or will we be saying, how could we have never thought of tearing down this building? The American Duchess is coming to Winona this week. Are the tour buses going to bring them to other future-thinking projects that we've had in Winona? Look at the results of the futures in Winona, how many have turned out well? We don't need to go there again. We don't have that much time. What would downtown look like today if we had the latch building, the Morgan Block, which was replaced by what is known in my house as the Small? Kraske, some merchants parking lot, on and on, you can't even name them all. No wonder we have such crummy Christmas decorations, there's no place to hang anything. What about the visionaries who insisted that the old Chicago Northwestern Depot had to be torn down? For what? A hairpin curb that requires cement barriers in front of the river view to keep people from drowning? Who thought that one up? The city argue that the plan's not just to build parking lots, but for now, they can be used as parking lots and developed later. The later's already here, the block is already developed. There's no way on earth that it will cost more to honestly fix up that building than it will be worth. For every dollar invested in that building, you will have a building worth many times more. So instead, we put in a parking lot and hope for a building to be put up in the future. Why is that any different than saving the building for a bit longer and then see what sort of plan surfaced? Parking is always the argument whenever someone wants to tear something down. Look at the heyday of downtown Winona, we didn't have acres for lots, acres of lots for cars, we had buildings for people. And consider the real future, how many parking lots are really going to be needed? Look at Walmart, they have the biggest parking lot in the world, but you still have to walk two blocks just to get to the building. As long as you have a certain number of cars, you're going to push them outward, and someone is going to have to walk. People looking to the future should look to the future of cars. Like it or not, autonomous cars are the future. Your car will drop you off at the door and go find itself a place to park, and come back when you need it, sort of like an obedient dog on wheels. Shared autonomous cars will eliminate the need for many people to even own a car. Mass transit is an obvious choice for many, and the auditorium location is an obvious mass transit stop. And it would be easy to have drop-off zones for those using mass transit or for those needing handicap parking. The obvious arguments for tearing down the building are, it's not practical. Where's the money come from? What will this be used for? We really aren't here to decide that. In fact, to attempt to answer these questions now would be foolish. I don't want to hear about where's the money, what's the use. Those are five-year forward-thinking views. Think beyond that. You're not planning a bush in your front yard and seeing how it's going to look in five years. We're not here to decide the building's long-term future. Just give it a chance. For those of you who say it's unsalvageable, do we really know that? All we have heard is rumors of the cost of this and that. If you say it's beyond saving, I will find someone who says it's eminently salvageable. We don't need to play that game. Neither view is more valid than the other, until we have some real honest numbers. And for that, you need a little time. But we know for sure that the cost of tearing it down will surely amount to something. I have read of numbers in the half-million-dollar range just to demolish the building. For that amount of building, we could clean it up, and at least then we'd have a beat-up building that was clean and we could restore it. If you're going to put that much money into cleaning up a lot, why not put that much money into cleaning up the building? At least you have something to show for your money. No one really knows this building was even available until it was decided to be torn down. No one came up with any plans, because nobody knew that it was available to make plans for. And now, we think it's maybe available, but we're not sure, and there's this big rush to demolish it. All we're saying here is give the building a chance. It sat empty and in decaying state for years. What difference would another six or 12 months make? If, as some say, it's beyond repair, leaving it alone for a bit longer won't make it any worse. If you haven't had any time to see if there are any plans out there, it won't hurt to give the building a bit more time. The Port Authority says to tear it down. The Port Authority is not an elected board. They have their own views on how to advance historic causes of Winona, but they are not directly answerable to the people. The City Council represents us. You are our voice. Don't come here with preconceived notions of what's best for us, that you know better. We already have a school board for that. Let's take a little time, have the people come up with some ideas, listen to them, and then decide. Maybe a referendum. I would be interested in seeing if the citizens would be willing to stick some of their tax money into this project. Let's find out. I know the main answer to these pleas is it's not practical. Accepting that is a valid point, which is debatable. What's so great about being practical? Stop trying to be practical. Being practical is just an easy, another way of saying, easy. It's easy to be practical. Look at the cost, look at the needs, look at the parking, be practical. Being practical did not give us Beethoven, Shakespeare, the Midwest Music Festival. It's having Washington Crossing to Delaware in Winona, a result of practical thinking. Is our industrial base here the result of entrepreneurs being practical? Look at a lot of the people here who live in impractical houses. Practicality is what gave us the Eastern wreck in the new post office. Is everything to be based on practicality and parking? Reading the press, a view that the building is not worth saving, with an addendum that a few noisy reactionaries doomed the YMCA by thwarting a quick trip to the heart of the most historic residential neighborhood in Winona. I proudly count myself among the noisy reactionary, and I noiselessly ask the City Council to do the right thing in allowing other noisy Winonans to show the city what real progressive thinking can come up with. Just give us some time, then you can shoot us down. Thank you.
Would you state your name before everybody, please? Okay, thank you. Anybody else here wish to speak to this issue? Anybody else wish to speak? I think there's some understandable confusion about what the council's being asked to do here tonight. We're not being asked to decide whether or not this auditorium's going to be torn down. We're simply being asked to give local designation to three buildings that are already on the national register. Those conversations may or may not come, but it'll be at a later date. It's not something we're going to decide here tonight. So one final ask, anybody else wish to speak to this issue?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ted Azleton. I live at 1073 West Fifth Street in Winona. I've been a Winona resident since 2002, previously living just outside of Winona in Minnesota City. I'm a history buff, as Mayor Peterson knows. There's an old saying, and I wholeheartedly believe it, it goes, "Those that don't know history are destined to repeat it." What I'm hearing from the editorials and the naysayers in Winona goes back to what people heard 40 years ago during urban renewal, when we lost the Morgan Block, the Chicago Northwestern Train Depot, and nearly our courthouse. There's a reason we have a Historic Preservation Committee, is to prevent past mistakes so that we don't repeat history again. I support putting the junior high, senior high, and auditorium buildings into the local designation. It's needed. Those were taxpayer-funded buildings. They were paid for by taxpayers, therefore, the taxpayers should have some say into the future of them. I'm not here to crunch numbers, but it really saddens me that Metro Plains asked for $50,000 to repair the drain tile work, which caused the problems in the first place, and they were denied by the Port Authority. Then the Port Authority goes and offers up this deal. If you were a business person, would you want to pay $500,000 to $600,000 to tear down a building in lieu of forgiveness of $400,000? To me, that's bad economics, and it doesn't make sense. So I would implore the City Council to accept the recommendation, place these buildings on the local register, and let's not be in a rush to tear them down. Let's look for possibilities. The future is endless. Most people in Winona never knew of this until it ran in the paper that the Port Authority voted to enter into this situation that we're talking about. There was no public knowledge of this whatsoever. Had people been aware of that, I'm sure the outcome could have been different. And also, had the Port Authority agreed to the $50,000 that they were asking, we would have not had the problems that we have today with this building. So I would lay blame on the owners and the Port Authority that got us into this situation. Let's do the right thing, place these buildings on the register, and hope that something can come to fruition. Well, as the previous speaker said, all that people are wanting is a little more time to make sure that we have a good, informed, solid decision rather than acting hastily. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? I'll ask one more time, anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, declare the public hearing closed, and ask if there's a motion from council.
I'll make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
I'll second that.
A motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul to approve the attached resolution. Discussion, George?
Yeah, I just want to just clarify kind of a couple, a couple of things here. First of all, in regards to Ted's remarks about the Port Authority, when they came to the Port Authority, the building was already in shambles. It already had the damage in it. And they came to the Port to assist, and I believe it was too late for that to happen. That's why the Port Authority did not get involved in loaning them that money. Okay? That's why, that's why it was not done. Everybody knows all these things, but nobody was in these meetings, and the port meetings are open to the public as these things are discussed, and they're open to the public. The building sits there for how many years? Dormant, and now, like you say, you know, discussion tonight is the preservation, but it's all centered on the auditorium, and probably myself as well, too, is probably more centered on the auditorium. It's this fantastic structure, and a lot of people didn't even know it was even there. And they drive by it every day. You go to the public library, you go to Winona Estates, they're all around downtown. The building's been there, it's no surprise. It just did not pop up five years ago. The building's been there with boarded-up doors in front. That's where it's been. Now we're trying to make some movement on something, and all of a sudden, all the buttons are getting pushed. And like I say, and tonight, the auditorium is not the issue, it's whether we're going to do the local historic designation. And just one more question on this, does, if we make, if the votes approved tonight, and I think it was said already, just for my clarification, that gives the city control over it, correct? Is that safe to say, or?
Mayor and council, it opens the door for public process and discussion, should anything go forward for exterior alteration or demolition.
Okay.
And my understanding would be if the Planning Commission and the Preservation Commission deny a permit, then the council would make the final decision.
That is correct. It would come back to the City Council.
In the end, it would be the council's decision. Michelle?
I'm not sure that building's salvageable. I've read the reports and looked at the pictures, and it's sat there for 20 years. And there have been multiple people have been brought in to look at rehabbing that, and all of them have looked at the cost and the size of the facility and said, it's just not doable. That being said, the reason I'm in favor of this is because it's not about the auditorium, it's about all of the buildings. Further, it lets the discussion happen locally instead of at the federal government. And whether we decide to demolish that building this year, next year, or never, that discussion happens here with our public input and not at some other location without our consideration. So no one should leave here thinking this stops the process moving forward. I want to be clear about that. I don't know where one else sits, but for myself, this is just a step in the process that allows that conversation to continue locally, which is what I'm looking for. So I'm voting in favor for it. Obviously, I made the motion, but.
Jury? Jury?
I got a couple of points. Somebody in the audience compared Winona's appearance to that of a war zone. Having been a person who unfortunately spent a lot of time in war zones, multiple war zones, comparing anything in Winona to resembling a war zone is offensive.
Okay.
I don't think that building is salvageable, but if it takes more time and more people look at it, somebody ponies up the money, we'll see. But it seems like if one building is voted down, then every council for the history of Winona is a bad person. They're just bad. It can't be an all or nothing. Each building has to be looked at independently, and that's, I hope, is what's being asked today. Just a point of record, we kind of forget that our own library was going to be, we were looking at replacing the library 32 years ago. Where the library were they wanted? And it was an old, inefficient library. We need to put it down by the river. And what's there now? The new bridge. So if we'd have gone with that, we'd have had to do it. That's why I ran for council 32 years ago. So some things go, some things don't go. But for this, oh, the city did look at, you know, when Michelle said that a number of different developers and people have looked at that building over their last 20-some years, the city actually did. We were looking at expanding the library. We're going to put some type of a walkway, a decorative walkway, connecting it using some of the buildings, some of the stuff over there, and working with local developers to fix up that auditorium. And this was probably 15 years ago, and at that, maybe even 20 years ago. And it was deemed at that point, we couldn't find anybody willing to do the auditorium because of its state at that point. And that was a long time ago. The city itself looked at, what can we do? Because we needed to expand the library, and we thought, how about combining the two? It didn't work at that time. So we've not been sitting idly by. I have my own opinion on what we should do with that building, but the vote tonight is not on that building. Is that correct? Just one more time.
We're not voting to demolition.
Yeah. I'm agreeing with this resolution. I just think that that building needs, I don't want to give a vote tonight on yes or no, especially yes on that building.
And we're not being asked to. Michelle, or Pam?
Yes, I am definitely voting in favor of the local designation, but one of my strong feelings is that we need to have a broader conversation about other buildings in town that are old, owned by private people, that may or may not be being taken care of in a way that would ensure their longevity. I'm glad to hear that Historic Preservation Commission is proceeding with historic preservation, local designation of our historic buildings. But there are a lot of buildings in town that I would really like to see preserved, and I have no idea if the owners agree with me. And we need, I think that the city needs a better process for moving through that process, which is undoubtedly complicated, but neglect, demolition by neglect is really, should be off the table in Winona.
George?
Just a question. Has the owner, Metro Plains, have they agreed to this? Because they own the buildings, correct?
They don't have to agree to it. The council can do it with or without their approval.
Or what was their thoughts on it?
The owner, Metro Plains, has been quite neutral throughout this process. They've been informed throughout the entire process, both at the early deliberation stages on behalf of the HPC, and then the formal steps going forward. We wanted to make sure that we were being forthright. The city of Winona, as a certified local government and enacted by its own ordinances, is allowed to proceed without the permission of the property owner for the designation, but I would characterize them as neutral. You would have to refer to them for their own specific.
I think the fact they have an objective means a lot.
And didn't they move forward with their federal designation on their own?
Yes, the National Register of Historic Places designation was a great fit just for them.
So they're apparently not opposed to designation.
Paul?
So like many of the people listening and in the audience, I've gone to many concerts in that auditorium, and of course, I went through, we went through that building. And I'm happy to support this resolution that designates those buildings so that the community can have the discussion that we should have had a few years ago. I'm not convinced that the building is salvageable. I have some expertise on buildings, and it costs a lot to run buildings, especially older ones. And I think, you know, we don't have a parking problem, we do have a walking problem. And we need to consider that in the conversation when we start talking about what will happen with this building. But I think it's time that the community comes forward and has a conversation, and I'm looking forward to that engagement.
Okay, thank you. Alan?
I appreciate all of comments tonight. I concur with my colleagues on council in the direction that this discussion is going, and I believe this is a good step to begin that discussion, to get all of our options on the table and not leave, you know, any opportunities out there. But I agree with councilperson Scholmeyer about the condition of the building and the costs of doing anything to bring it back to useful process and the cost of operating even after that's done. That's a real issue, but I support the resolution there.
Okay. Well, I think we're ready to vote, so. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
And on to the petitions, requests, and communications. Item 3.1 is an appointment to the Board of Adjustment of Tom Conley. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item 3.2 is an appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Kevin Thoad. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? I've met Mr. Thoad. I think he'd be a great appointment. He's an architect and seems quite enthusiastic about Winona's history and heritage, so.
Mayor? Is he here this evening?
I don't believe so. No.
Okay.
I think it would be great to have someone with lead qualifications on the HPC.
Yeah, me too. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.3, Katie's Place Street Closure Request for September 22nd.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by George, and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.4 is a request from Main Street Program for the Big Muddy Brew and Q Event to be held at Lovey Park on September 1st and 2nd.
I make a motion to approve the license agreement and authorize.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Another great event coming up. Alan?
Is the farmer's market affected by this, or how is that incorporated into the event?
Chad's going to answer that question.
Mayor and council, we notified the farmer's market with their latest agreement that this Saturday would not be available within their license agreement. They are aware that if this event is going on, they're going to need to either find an alternate location or, I'm not sure what the decision is, I guess. They've been notified.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? Carries.
Item 3.5 is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for the Big Muddy Brew and Q to be held on September 1st and 2nd.
Move to approve that license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.6 is a request to close a portion of Ewing Street for a benefit at EB's Bar on Saturday, September 8th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.7 is a request from the Main Street Program for the Third Space Event, and I believe Emily is here if you have questions.
I make a motion to approve the license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Emily, you want to say anything?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second set of some of the Third Space programs that you've seen come before you. We've had a couple already. Last week, we had our first free family concert and a Shakespeare in the Streets event that was really exciting. It's really, really thrilling to see the streets filled in different ways and seeing people walking around and moving and looking in spaces and businesses that they don't normally take the time to stop in and look at. We're really excited to partner with other organizations, specifically artists and arts organizations for these programs, to really launch some of these projects in a big way that I know people have been working on and talking about for many years.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
Emily, I just want to say that I think you're doing a great job at the Main Street Program. I think you've been a great addition. I love all these ideas you come up with and the way you institute them and engage as much of the Winona community as you can. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for supporting the artists and supporting the work downtown. It's exciting to see some of these conversations coming to fruition, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? None? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.8 is a request to close a portion of Kansas Street on Sunday, August 12th. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Jerry. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? Carries.
Item 3.9 is the Streets Meet Block Parties to be held on August 8th, August 11th, August 26th, and September 16th.
I move to approve. Second.
All right. Way to go, Pam. Motion by Pam, seconded by Michelle. She beat you. She got right in there. She was waiting for it. Tesla, would you, this is your request, would you like to say a few words?
Oh, I certainly would. Tesla Mitchell, 518 Kansas Street. Thank you for that previous approval. We're really excited for this weekend. So I'm super excited to take off the journalist hat right now and instead put on the community leader hat and to help out with this Street Meet program. So this is super exciting. It's a program that is helping Winona residents plan and host their own block parties. And I'm in partnership with Engage Winona, Winona Arts, Treadon, which Danny is over there, and Tiny Spoons. And so they've all really helped out to bring together this program, and we're providing these residents with live music and food and help with the council for blocking off the streets. And it's been really amazing. So our first block party was yesterday, and they just left, but it was amazing. They had over 100 people there and a lot of really great music and just a lot of really beautiful moments. I watched two neighbors meet that lived next to each other for many years. And I saw kids in a neighborhood that one of the leaders thought there weren't any kids. And so there's just been amazing moments. One of my favorites was, this little two-year-old was aggressively pushing this fire truck that he was riding, and he was like pushing it through this massive balloon popped, a water balloon popped cemetery. It was just, it was really cool. We had in a water balloon fight and lots and lots of food. So I'm excited for five more of those. And one of them is on Wednesday, and another two on Saturday. So my hope is that in the future, this program continues with support from businesses in the city. I'd really love to see Winona be just scattered with block parties. I feel like that's how we connect neighborhoods, and that's how we just connect with each other. So I'm pretty excited about this. Any questions or anything?
Alan?
Yeah, I think it's a great program. Support the motion and all that. How do people in those neighborhoods find out about the event?
Yeah, so they've been giving out lots of invites. So every block party is printing out invites and finding creative ways to get them to each house, whether that's knocking on the door, or my favorite is taking a paper plate, putting the invite on that, and then adding a rubber band so it can be put on the door handle and stuff. So yeah, and just the planning of this is creating lots of relationships just in that. So the one that happened yesterday had like a neighborhood committee of about 20 people who were planning all of this. And so they built relationships just in even the planning of it. So even if, say, it rained horribly and it was thunderstorming and no one came out, things still happened just because of that. People, you know, found out where each other lived and, you know, were able to have good, positive moments together, so. Yeah. And you guys know how much I love block parties, so.
I applaud you for your efforts here.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I wouldn't be able to do it without the support of quite a few Winona businesses, you don't mind if I name drop, but the Winona Foundation, Winona Arts, Auto Collision Gyms, Truck and Trailer, and the Professional Cleaning Services, all of Winona, so. Pretty excited. Yes. Any other questions?
George?
I remember, I believe you did the first one down on High Forest Street.
Yep, yep.
And there was a live band, and the blacktop wasn't that fun to dance on.
No, it wasn't. But I'm glad you showed up. I'm glad you showed up.
That was a good time.
Yeah, and so I included with the request a map of all of the different block parties and areas that they've invited and the times and dates of those. So feel free to check out the ones that are in your district. It'd be super awesome if you guys were able to come and just meet people. It's a great, super stress-free socializing event, and yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's a motion though.
There's a motion. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.10 is a request to close Chatfield Street for the Eastside Bar Car Show Party on August 25th. Move to approve that request.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. I was looking for a motion from George.
Well, he was looking at me, so I assumed he wanted me to make it. I don't know.
Well, we got the motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1, awarding the contract for the Huff Street Highway 61 traffic signal and pedestrian facility improvements project. The low bid was done blacktop at $624,931. However, the bid was $100,000 over the MINDOT budget, so we're recommending rejecting all bids.
I'd move to reject the award and not award the contract.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul to reject the award. Any discussion? Paul?
So is this aberration? Prices going up? What seems like is happening here with these bids?
The reason we bid at this time of year is it was a 2019 fiscal year MINDOT project, so we could not bid it till after July 1st fiscal year for MINDOT. Being that said, after talking to the contractors, and we had this worry going in because it was a late bid, the contractors, especially the electrical people that do the signals, are booked. And it's kind of assumed that they bid it at paying overtime the entire time. So what we're planning on doing with council's permission is rebidding it in November for a May or spring type of construction. Should have a lot more favorable bids because, you know, the contracts, this first one out of flocks. If it wasn't for the fiscal year thing, we'd probably have bid this earlier and better prices.
Alan?
Was, is the city's portion of this project, will that change at all if this bid is rejected?
We pay a fourth of that signal.
Okay.
So the signal prices were definitely high. Some of the concrete prices were a touch high, too. That should also come down because concrete contractors are swamped also. I mean, it's a good thing that they're swamped, that there's a lot of work out there, but it hurt us on this one because of late bid.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Not? Vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
And on to new business. Item 5.1 is the renewal of the Winona State University Transit Service Agreement for the 2018-2019 school year.
Make our motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item five point two is a certification of completion, final estimate, resolution of acceptance of the 2018 bituminous melon overlay project.
Move to approve the attached resolution and authorize the final payment.
Second.
That's wrong.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side. Carries.
Item five point three is the Contract Services Agreement for Design for the Sewer and Water Extension Project with WHKS and Company.
Move to approve that agreement.
Second.
Attached resolution, I guess.
Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle.
Attorney, House.
Oh, Chris.
Mayor and council, could you just approve hiring WHKS with that scope of services and then approve entering into our standard professional services contract as opposed to the contract that's in the package?
Make that all into one motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Who was the second?
I was.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I just, professional services agreement, I noticed on Exhibit A, project description, they talk about Thomas Land, describing some of the streets in that area, and they mean Thomas Lane, just a typo there, that I compare with the changes to the motion as suggested by our attorney. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item five point four is the Alley Maintenance Program. I'd move to adopt the attached resolution and adopt the alley maintenance plan. I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Something that the council spent some time on in a pre-council meeting tonight, so. Already discussed this considerably, but any other comments or questions before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side. Carries.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Well, let's start with George.
Thank you. I mentioned Keith here, I just phoned him, I believe it was last week, and there's people who have homes, well-kept up lawns, and they neighbor city property. It could be a vacant lot, it could be a drainage ditch, you know, it could be many different things. Could maybe be a generator station, whatever. And, you know, we are required to mow our lawn once a week, every other, whatever it may be, and the residents kind of feel that the city should have the same responsibility. And I know we don't have all the people to do that because we have a lot of land, but if there's just some way that we could maybe try to find a way that we could perhaps get this cut maybe in a more timely manner, you know, for future discussion among staff or we come up with about getting these done, because there are some drainage ditches that grow up with a lot of wild weeds. Keith's aware of some of those that we have, and by getting them trimmed a little more, so. And also tomorrow night, I believe, is National Night Out. Is that right, tomorrow night? And I know there's a very large gathering planned down at the East End Rec Center, and I know there are other ones throughout town as well, too. And as we had the discussion earlier, you know, about the auditorium in downtown and all that, and I remember I was, it was nineteen sixty-nine, seventy, I was pumping gas at Western Gas Station for a dollar sixty cents an hour, and they were tearing all these buildings down. Now, I'm a junior in high school, I not really know much what's going on, but I remember all that renewal that the federal government had, however, we got into that, was tearing all those beautiful buildings down and things, so. All of Main Street, as we all remember it, is totally different today than what it was, Al, back in your day when you were on Main Street, so.
Before the turn of the century.
But anyway, like I say, I know that was a very, very big program ask, too. Then also, I would just like to extend condolences to Judge Dennis Shaline's family and his passing, a very notable and remarkable judge and lawyer throughout his career, and also to the family of Phyllis Skukowski, Phyllis who passed away this past Sunday. Very, very caring woman. Her heart was in her church. She was on the quilting committee, a very loving and caring woman, a very good wife, very good mother. And to her husband, Tom, which you know, a lot of us all know, and to all of his children and grandchildren, condolences on the passing of a very, very wonderful woman.
I want to echo George's sentiments to the Shaline family. I know the boys, and I even knew Judge Shaline in a way that some of us probably didn't want to know. So, you know.
I seen you cutting grass.
The ways he had of rectifying the wrongs that people did, I think, were revolutionary and helped get many of us on the right track. I also want to commend the staff, Parks and Rec. They did a great job yesterday at Floating Concert. Jeez, there must have been six hundred people out there, and I know we had seven, eight staff out there. They were all working hard, they were polite, they were doing a great job, and they should be commended for the work that they did because they were busy, and it was just a fantastic time. A riverboat pilot friend of mine was down there with me, and he was very impressed with the Winona art scene, and although he couldn't stick around for what's happening next week, but he'll be back in town piloting the Duchess on Wednesday.
All right, good. Pam?
Well, speaking of, speaking of the parks, I've had the honor of participating in the task force for our new park plan for the Park and Recreation Department, and that's been a really exciting and exciting work, full of all kinds of possible ideas and ways to direct the energies of all of the Park and Rec Department. I would like to invite you to come to the open house this week. It is on Wednesday, not next week. Okay, okay. I need to confer with the person that's putting this on.
It's Wednesday.
Okay, next Wednesday. Do come, come to the open house and look at the plan and pitch in and tell people what you think. This will be held down at Lake Lodge. Lake Lodge, a week from Wednesday.
I have nothing tonight, although if we can maybe invite the sheriff to come and talk about the jail advisory committee so they can share the findings of that, the work that committee's been working on, so that everyone here is aware of the situation.
Because they do.
Either a pre-council or, I'm going to suggest a pre-council, but depending on who comes.
Okay.
Was that too late? I mean, against. Okay.
Jerry?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, Al?
Again, sympathy to Manager Sarvi on the passing of his mother-in-law. And we do have wonderful parks, and hearing a lot of good things about our parks. Unfortunately, early July, apparently, someone decided to take a piece of that park home with them, and the dedication plaque at our historic band shell was removed and has since not been recovered. So my thought is that perhaps somebody is selling it for scrap. Hopefully, I know the scrap yards have been alerted and they're well aware of that, but I would like to have staff start thinking about perhaps doing something to replace that very kind dedication that FS Bell did for the city back in the, I think, nineteen twenties. So that is. And speaking of the band shell, missing plaque or not, there will be a band concert Wednesday night at our Winona Municipal Band Shell, and everybody can hope for good weather because the last two have been rained out, or weathered out anyway. Eight o'clock Wednesday. And then, as the mayor said earlier, I'll remind people again, I think it's the first ever Minnesota primary, which comes up on Tuesday, August fourteenth, so be sure to participate and make your voice heard, otherwise, you know, that's your opportunity to do that. And then finally, I guess I got a notice from the Minnesota, just a traffic note here from the Minnesota Department of Transportation, that Highway forty-three Bridge, there will be lane closures on the bridge on Tuesday tomorrow, nine AM to three PM. So be alert and drive carefully when you cross our bridge. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just one more thing. Friday night at Ashley for the Arts, they're going to be honoring the Great River Shakespeare, Shakespeare Festival, so I'm sure me and a few people here, I know we've all had some work with them, so it's quite an honor.